I'd like to start off by saying this meeting will be recorded posted on the township website. You can submit public comment by email to glipincott@westrockhill township.org. We will take public comment until the end of the meeting. And we will read public comment prior to the vote at the end of the meeting, depending on what is appropriate. Thank you. All right, it is seven o'clock from what I see. I will call this meeting to order. For August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, Board of Supervisors meeting in West Rock Hill Township. Would you all please join Pledge to the Flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, first on the agenda is public comments on agenda items. If there is any, please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Darlene Leidy.
Yes, Darlene.
Two eighteen Augustine Road. Terry and I would like to be able to make a comment or two after the discussion on the Moser property before you would vote on it, if that would be possible. Because there might be a discussion on something during that discussion that will come up that we would have a question on.
Okay. You got it.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? Seeing none, I will move on to announcements. We will be holding an executive session after the meeting, correct Greg?
Correct, about legal.
Yep, thank you. All right, consent agenda. The two thousand and twenty, July twentieth, twenty-two meeting minutes, the wind of review, escrow, emergency service report, building and zoning permit report, public works report, and a treasure report I will ask Greg to read, please, and payment of bills.
Sure, the treasures report for July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. The general fund, one million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-three cents. Highway aid, two hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. Open space, one million, three hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. The park fund, thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. The equipment fund, nineteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. Highway capital, one hundred and thirty, twenty-three. Streetlight, thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. The general fund reserve, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and seventy-five cents. The American Rescue Plan Fund, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, fifty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. Open Space Manderfield, forty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. The sewage maintenance fund, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. The stormwater fund, ten thousand, eight hundred, sixty dollars and eighty-seven cents. And the escrow funds, two million, three hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-three cents.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the treasures report as presented there by either supervisors?
David Collingwood, I have one question and I'd like Mr. Lippincott to follow up. I didn't see emergency services report. I didn't see anything from Tyler's port.
Yes, I will follow up with that.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
And one comment, as I had mentioned last meeting, for everybody who is actually joining us to thank the Tremboresville, Tyler's Port, Telford, and Solosville Fire Companies, who are the ones who provide fire services to West Rock Hill. They are all looking for volunteers and from what I've heard from members on the Pennsyl School Board, they are now working on actually being able to get the kids out of gym class. If you actually join up with the fire company and spend some time actually working on the fire trucks and going out to calls.
Thank you. Okay, duly noted. With that, I'd entertain a motion for approval of consent agenda.
So moved by David.
All right, moved by David, seconded by Hal. All those signify by saying aye. Aye. I just have it, thank you. Confirmed appointments, Mr. Miller, first year production results of the solar array.
Yes, hello. All right, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. On May seventeenth of last year, we installed the solar array and actually came up, started running about four o'clock in the afternoon. So tonight I want to give a summary of everything that's happened in the past year up until May. But first, I'd just like to give you a quick overview of how this all works. Silicon is a natural element that when exposed to light actually creates an electrical current. So these panels, all one hundred and eighty of them, are filled with silicon, which is all tied together in a network of wiring. And that allows them to all flow together into a channel that can then create electricity. Now, you cannot just take this electricity right into the township building because this creates DC current, direct current. What you need to do is actually convert it. So these six inverters that you see, the six white inverters, each of those handles thirty solar panels. And that makes up the one hundred and eighty, eighty solar panels. And they, they convert the DC power to AC power. And then AC power travels underground and goes right into the breaker box. And that's it. That's everything. That's the whole, that's the whole process, really. There's no moving parts. There's no maintenance. It'll sit here for forty years and just run. So that's how it works. I know a lot of people have questioned just how difficult is it? But it's really, I mean, that's it. So moving on. The goals when we first started this project were to reduce carbon emissions. Some folks wanted that. Some folks wanted to off, you know, offset all of our taxpayer-funded electricity. And some people wanted both, like me. I wanted to be able to do both. We also wanted to be able to reduce taxpayer expenses and also want transparency and education. You can see that we, the taxpayer-funded electricity was eighty-four megawatts annually. And the expenses for that eighty-four megawatts was around sixteen thousand dollars annually. So to take on the first two issues, the environmental benefits and CO2 emissions. And as of the end of the first year, we had hit a hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight pounds of CO2 was eliminated, a hundred and fifty-five thousand plus pounds of CO2. On the other side, our goal was to reach eighty-four megawatts and you can see that we actually really, on that day, exactly one year later, we had hit one hundred and one megawatts. So we're well above our eighty-four megawatts that we needed. And by the way, these are, these are just snapshots right from the, the application that is on the township website where you can go out and look at data. For the other, the other issues, I really wanted to explain some, there's three terms I wanted to explain first. First is net metering. Think of net metering as your bank account. You have debits and you have credits. While you're making electric, as I said, the electric comes right into the breaker box. Breaker box then will distribute it to anything with, that's on that, that breaker system, which is the township building and the maintenance building. All the extra electricity we make goes right back out to PPL. And our meters basically run backwards. So we end up with a surplus of electric. And then at night, we use some of that electric again, as, as, because it's not producing then. We use a little bit of it and the next day we do the same thing. We just, and this continues to build throughout the year. Virtual metering is a little different. For meters that are not on this main panel, like the park, it's an after, after the fact type of deduction. The, the electric bills that we get will actually show that, that we're paying a certain amount, but then there's an amount deducted before we actually have to pay it. And I'll go into all that too. And renewable energy credits is the third thing. Electric companies are required to produce a certain amount of electricity with some type of renewable energy. And they can't. So we can actually take our credits. A credit is equal to a megawatt of electric. But we can sell it on the open market. We have a, we have a broker who lives in Quakertown and he actually sells it for us and a lot of residential people like myself. I use the same broker, Gary Vlaadnik, who's a supervisor in East Rock Hill uses the same one. And our broker gathers them all up and sells them on the open market and then pays, you know, we get checks in the mail for that. So those are the three things, net metering, which you can really think of as a debit and a credit to a bank account. And the virtual metering and the solar renewable energy credits. So this is an example of the township.
Five minutes are up for the confirmed appointment.
Really?
Yeah.
Am I allowed to continue speaking since this is a township?
Confirmed appointments are for five minutes, Jim? I don't mind you, I don't mind you wrapping up, going a little over here, but not, not twenty or thirty minutes.
All right, I will make it quick.
No, I agree. Couple more minutes.
All right, you can see here that we had zero on the supply side. That's because absolutely every bit of our electric for the entire year was produced with, with solar power. And you can see down at the bottom on the bar graph that only one line, that blue line is the only line that we had, because that was halfway through May. So for that, we had no other electric that we used other than this. And that makes a difference because the electric bills, as you can, or the usage charges on the, on the right side went from oh six cents to seven cents and nine cents to eleven cents. We didn't, we were not affected by that at all. On the other side is what's demand charges. Demand charges are charges that go to non-residential customers. And I'm afraid I don't have time to tell you about that. So you know what? I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna quit, okay? That's it. I won't even go into the other stuff. So that's it.
Okay.
I'm very disappointed that this was put in for the township. And I specifically asked for time to look at all this and show you how it all works and how, how much money and time and energy it's saving. And I'm not giving any effort for it. So anyway, any extra time. So that's it. Thank you.
Duly noted, Mr. Miller.
Well, I do have a question for Jim because one of the things that Holiday House is looking at is recreating a similar situation. So if I can yield time and just ask Jim about the credits and the cost of installation, because I know we figured out that we could probably put a similar sized installation where the YMC building used to be over at Holiday House. Can you give me a quick summation of the construction costs and how that worked out, how you got grants? And that's my question to you.
We had no grants. The construction costs were a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars for a seventy kilowatt system. Seventy kilowatt system covers the entire amount of electricity we needed to create the electric. If I move ahead, you can see that we saved and you would get, you could use this as an example. We saved in the first year on the township and maintenance building, we saved seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. On the virtual metering at Park, we saved eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. PPL purchase of excess electricity, we saved four thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars. And on solar energy credits, we saved three thousand, seven hundred. So we said that our electric bills were about sixteen thousand and we actually received back sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-six. So taking that into account, Hal, a purchase price of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars for a seventy kilowatt system, at a ten-point-three-year projection, we thought it'd be eleven. And over a forty-year period of life of the system, we expect to see about a five hundred thousand dollar savings.
Okay, thank you. Moving forward. Next on the agenda is committee reports, planning commission, Mr. Durstein.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right, thank you. All right, so planning commission met last Tuesday. We had three applicants. First one being Wawa. They would like to combine two lots on Meeting House between State and Old State Road. Reconfigure lot lines to create a two-point-eight acre lot at the southwest corner. And to develop a Wawa convenience store on that lot. And a two-point-one-eight acre lot that has an existing residence and outbuilding. That's at the intersection of Meeting House and Old State Room. The Wawa store proposed that six thousand, forty-nine square feet with sixteen fuel pumps. Entrances on State and Meeting House. There's a few, few zoning issues that are working against them. First item, zoning doesn't allow convenience store use on the road classifications that State Road and Meeting House are classified under. I forget what they are. But our ordinance only allows for a convenience store on a certain classification, which neither of these roads are. Another one does not allow indoor seating in convenience stores. And they use, Wawa is proposing to have beer sale in their store and for the state to allow beer sale, they have to have some type of indoor seating. So that is working against them. And they would also want to have twenty-four hour operation, which I think is, I don't know if that's a zoning issue or it's a, it's something that the supervisors have to hash out with the, with the applicant. So they were just in to, to give us an overview of what they're, what they're looking to do. And obviously, traffic is a big concern. With the three other warehouse projects going on in that vicinity, that will be the big issue. So they're, you know, waiting on, on, on further updates and input from the traffic folks. And I did see that they have representation here to speak later, so I'll let them fill in the gaps that I left out if they need to. So that's it for Wawa for now. Any questions on that?
I have none.
I, David Collingwood, I was at the meeting and I agree that the oversized parking and traffic and there's a lot of issues here that we have to, we have a long way to go here. But thank you.
Yep.
Yep, had agreed, also listened in on the meeting and there's a lot of moving parts that we have to try to stop moving so we can get some ideas on how to move forward on this.
All right. So moving on, our next applicant was Eastern Montgomery Properties. They are proposing a nine thousand square foot building on two lots totaling one point nine seven acres. Properties on Old Mill Road, near the Forest Road intersection. It's in the PC two district and they're coming in under a G four contract for service use. They were in over a year ago and they've addressed most of the issues that we discussed back then. One, one item where they've discussed, instead of doing improvements on their property frontage, it was suggested that in, you know, in lieu of that, to do road widening of Old Mill out to Forest. You know, with the increased truck traffic, it's construction business, so when I have increased truck traffic. They, they seem amenable to that, but they will be coming back with, with some answers on that. And have discussion with staff as well. They're looking for a couple of simple waivers, which planning commission didn't seem to have any problems with. So they'll be back after cleaning things up a bit. Now that is it for Eastern Montgomery. Any questions on that?
No questions, David Collingwood.
Nope, no questions. Listen to the meeting.
I had no questions.
Okay, so our last applicant was Triple Nut Investments. You know this one. They're looking to subdivide ninety-five acres currently owned by North American Dragger. And once subdivided into two lots, the west side of Quarry, Quarry Road. One lot would be sixty-four and a half acres, contain the North American Dragger office, parking, their buildings there. The other would be thirty and a quarterish acres. And they were proposing to develop a three hundred and sixty-three thousand square foot warehouse. This parcel, it's located between North American Dragger and the PPL building there on State Road. And then it boundaries on the west side with Landis and Wellingtons, you know, that's that long stretch of field there. And this again is a very preliminary presentation that they gave. They were looking just to let us know what they're thinking of doing and we're looking for a little bit of input for now. There was no way or no, they originally were going to come in with a fifty-foot high building. They did reduce that to keep it within zoning standards, so there will be no, no relief sought on that. They have no, no tenants as of yet. They don't know of hours of, of operation due to not knowing who tenants will be. So, and again, traffic is the big deal. So we'll see what shakes out on all these reports and traffic studies. So that was all I have for Triple Net at this time. They'll be back in. Do they have any questions on that?
No questions, David Collingwood.
Well, one, one comment, I remember that the trail plan actually suggests connecting Indian Valley Library back through the ball fields through one portion of that section over to Quarry Road, so you can go Quarry Road, go across Cat Hill and then up Branch and then up Lonely Road. As a bike trailer, walking trail, it eventually gets to James Park. So there is some, there is some interest, or at least there's a long-term, we had a long-term plan which says it would be nice if you could walk from the library over to Quarry Road, which is fairly low traffic still. But like I said, I was there at the meeting, mentioned that, no other questions.
Okay, I would be cautious on walking up Lonely Road. And Quarry Road, I think is, does have quite a bit of traffic on it from what I gather. Anyway, thank you for your comment.
Yeah, and I believe we, we did have, well, after Hal brought it up, we did have discussion about that at the meeting and it was, I don't know if it was in our engineering review, but it was on the Bucks County review that was mentioned in that review.
I think, I think the comp plan and the long-term trails plan has that as a way of getting from, as a way of getting from James Park down to Indian Valley Library, because it's the easiest way. I've ridden the bike through there. You should drop the car off, then ride the bike back up, then ride the bike, bike back down to get it up from Keeler's, but it's doable. It's, there are a couple of good hills, gives you a good cardio, but.
Yeah, I think it's something, something we can certainly ask Triple Net about, for sure.
Yep.
Yeah, so that was basically our meeting. We did have a little bit of discussion on our comp plan initiative. Nothing, nothing major to report on that. So that is my report.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Entertain a motion for approval on the planning commission report.
I'll move to approve the planning commission report.
Seconded. Motion made in second. All those signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you. Okay, up next on the agenda here is Park and Rec, Mr. Dave Rice.
All right, moving to Park Night. That's how we started the last Saturday evening out with Smallfoot. We were a little underserved as far as the amount of members that showed up, but it was a beautiful night. It was right around sixty degrees-ish. Nice chill in the air. It was nice to watch a movie and just be out in the park and it was a nice quiet night. I can see a lot of stars out there, so it was, it was a really good night. We had the first opportunity to use our hand wash station, which was placed next to the porta potts. And it was well-received. It was easy to clean up afterwards and, you know, cart it off with just a simple hand truck. So it was, it was a well-purchased item, so I think September Fest is going to give it its full test drive. So we're, we're looking forward to that. So it's a dual sink, so it has both sides and it was simple and easy to fill, so Seth says, about five minutes to fill. So it was a good, it was a good purchase and we're happy we did that. Moving on to September Fest, we're looking to replace actually two coolers. So we're looking for approval to purchase two coolers. I can send list, an Amazon link to Greg, forty-eight quart coolers, because we usually pick up ice for September Fest for like the, the ice cream and the different drinks that we might have. So we're looking to purchase two of those. So if we can get approval for that, that would be great. I'll send Greg a link for that from Amazon. They're like fifty bucks a pop. They're nothing. Moving on to September Fest, that is coming up, September twenty-fifth. We got a lot of things in the works, a lot of good items on the list. I think it's going to be a great day again, because cross my fingers that it's going to be a beautiful day, nice sunshine and some cool temperatures. It'll be nice from noon to five. And got a lot of good events on the agenda, couple new ones, a couple old ones. Next on the agenda, we have, we're looking to actually, as far as the bench plan, we were looking to, so new benches that we have, they increased in price. But we were also had a conversation, Jay was in attendance at the meeting. So what we were doing is we had a conversation in regards to like a lifetime maintenance fee to include in the initial cost. So if the, let's say the initial cost is right now, I think they're, I don't want to misspeak, Greg, I think it's four and a four and a quarter.
Yeah, I, I believe you're right.
I think it's four and a quarter with a plaque. And I believe that's the cost going right now, as of the last purchase that we had, which was three months ago, four months ago. And we're looking to add an additional twenty-five dollar for a lifetime maintenance fee for each of those. Just because we have the staining, the, the maintenance of the wood. Years later, it is press-treated wood. They last probably ten, fifteen years before they need some real work. I mean, the, the stain and the paint needs every two, three years more like it, but the wood probably replaced every ten to twelve years. So that's why we're looking to get approval to add that to the cost of any new purchases of benches moving forward. And moving on to adding trees, we actually have the tree plan. We have sections one, two, and six. We're looking to place some sycamore trees at the back of the park on either side of the dog park. And two new trees to replace the red maples up front, so we can finish that front row. And we had, I sent out the cost analysis Monday afternoon when I got the final totals from Lehigh Valley. Lehigh Valley Home and Gardens up in Allentown. That is where we got John Man tree. So they had served us well. And they will have delivery. I believe it's just over twenty-two hundred dollars. And I thought it was a great price. We shopped around a little bit. We got some great trees that are coming in right around twelve to sixteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen foot tall. And got approval that we should be able to use the public works guys. I did talk to Seth. He said it'd be simple. Just grab a backhoe, throw a bucket in there, plant some trees and I would, you know, be willing to, you know, help and we could do that and get that all situated once we get those delivered. So we're looking forward to moving on with the trees. The purchase of the trees, the twenty-five dollar additional maintenance fees for the benches. And the purchase of the two new coolers, the forty-eight quart coolers moving forward for September Fest.
Okay, any, any questions or concerns regarding the request of the Park and Rec as presented?
David Collingwood, I'm, I'm trying to follow, I'm following the agenda in my packet from the Park and Rec meeting and the movie's on there, September Fest is on there, the trees are on there for sections one, two, and six.
Correct.
I have nothing. I know you said you were going to send things to Mr. Lippincott about the coolers. I have nothing on the coolers. I have nothing in front of me on the pricing of the trees in my packet and I have nothing on.
That was sent at two o'clock on Monday afternoon.
And I have nothing in my packet, which is put together on Friday afternoons about the lifetime maintenance fee. So I, I need time to look at this and digest it. And if I can get that information, I'd appreciate it.
Which one? You want the twenty-five dollar additional maintenance cost for the benches, which is?
I have nothing on the coolers. I have nothing on the twenty-five dollar maintenance fee and I have nothing on the price of the trees.
And actually was listed right below where it said David will present the board of supervisors with the planning in six year, right below that, the next paragraph down and says it was requested.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at your agenda from Monday night, from August eleventh.
This is in the minutes. So this is, the minutes. So this is, the minutes were probably included in your packet.
They were not.
Okay. The minutes are, um, were sent out. So, um, I'm not sure I can forward those to you. But yeah, I mean, basically the, we, we Googled it right there while we were sitting there, because we were talking about September Fest, picking up the ice. We're going through the details and all that stuff. They're right around fifty dollars a per, uh, for a forty-eight dollar, for a forty-eight quart cooler. Um, I mean, we're not loo- looking for Yetis. We're just looking for forty-eight quart, you know, coolers just to, you know, bring some ice from Tyler's Port Fire Company to bring the ice over to September Fest. I mean, I'll go.
All right. I'm gonna stop you.
I'm not.
Dave, I'm gonna stop you there. Uh, I don't have a problem with, with what was presented. I reviewed the information. I attended the meeting. Mr. Lippincott can certainly approve the expenditures of this cost, the, uh, the low cost that it is. Mr. Shermer, do you have any issues or concerns regarding the request of the Park and Rec? I know that you were in attendance at the Park and Rec meeting as well.
Yep, I also attended the meeting. Uh, I listened to the discussion. Uh, I used to be a land, I worked for a landscaper and I read the minutes as they were sent out on Monday. So I just moved to approve the requests for trees, the cooler and. What was the third one?
The twenty-five-dollar additional maintenance. I mean, it's.
And the continuing, essentially the continuing care maintenance.
Correct.
Okay, so we have a motion made. I will second that motion. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I will abstain. I don't have information enough to, uh, make a decision.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion carries, Mr. Rice.
Appreciate it.
Is that all you have or?
That is it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your report. I will entertain a motion for approval of the Park and Rec report as, as presented.
I'll move to approve. I was there. Everything is correct.
Okay, motion's been made. I'll second it. All those signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed or abstain?
Abstain. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Okay, moving forward. The Conservation Committee, uh, Vera Cole, hello.
Hello, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
The, um, uh, the Conservation Committee is a group of volunteers that help interested landowners conserve their properties through Pennsylvania's Open Space Law. West Rock Hill's goal is to conserve thirty percent of its approximately ten thousand five hundred acres. We're halfway there with seventeen percent of the township's acreage preserved. If you are interested in conserving your property, you're welcome to contact the township manager and begin discussions with the Conservation Committee. Our last Conservation Committee meeting was held in person where everyone wore masks on July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Highlights are, one, new open space signs. David displayed two new open space signs made of heavy aluminum to withstand damaging conditions. The correct acreage is permanently imprinted on the surface. Kevin, the owner of Horizon Signs, will replace the broken signs himself. He also has constructed pen dot approved powder coated green posts for new signs. Second highlight, uh, the Township Newsletter Map. When Associates will be asked to revise their rendering of the Open Space Map and pay special attention to the new colors approved by the Conservation Committee. The Conservation Committee discussed featuring two different maps in future Township newsletters. A general interest map with important township landmarks and an open space map, one displayed in the spring and the other in the fall edition. Third highlight, the West Rock Hill Comprehension Plan Revision, twenty-nineteen. John Sweraduck of the Comprehensive Plan Revision Committee requested the Conservation Committee to consider working on a list of twenty-three action items. The Conservation Committee reviewed the action items and found that three items apply to Conservation Committee work. Item one, work with farmers to preserve priority farms through Bucks County's agricultural preservation or by conservation easement. Item fifteen, assess best use of the Catch Basin for the benefit of township residents. Note, this type of assessment is typically done in coordination with the Parks and Recreation Committee. And item twenty-three, continue implementing township's conservation strategy of preserving thirty percent of its area. Conservation Committee meetings are held on the third Thursday of odd number of months at seven o'clock PM and posted on the township website. The next meeting is on September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Conservation Committee Minutes and some very informative booklets are posted on the West Rock Hill Township, Township website. And they can be found by navigating to the Conservation Committee tab or available in the Township Committee, in the Township Office. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I want to make a clarification on something. The, uh, Catch Basin property, that is under the jurisdiction of the Park and Rec Committee. I don't know who, um, you said John Sweraduck recommended that under the comprehensive plan? When we purchased that property, that, that was, that was labeled under the Park and Rec. That's going to be a future, well, it was planned to be a future part of the park at some point in time. So just wanted to make that clear, um, in case somebody is not understanding that properly. And we could probably go back and look to see if that's somewhere listed. Mr. Duval was a supervisor at the time and Mr. Mann, I think, was a supervisor at that time.
So, um, just so that I can report that back correctly, you're saying that it is, as, to your, uh, best understanding, it's the Catch Basin is under the jurisdiction of the Parks and Rec Committee?
The Catch Basin property was, it's under, it's under the super, Board of Supervisors' control, but the, but the Park and Rec Committee, the Park and Rec was going, is, was going to be expanded into that property at some point in time. Okay, it is under the control of the Board of Supervisors, though.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that that is, is, you know, coordinated through Park and Rec whenever something is discussed.
Well, it was, it was noted here that this type of assessment is typically done in coordination with the Parks and Rec Committee.
Okay.
So I will, I'll circle back and make sure that's clear.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yep, and I would add that like, oh, twenty-five years ago, I went through the Catch Basin property as the local guide for Dr. Ann Rhodes from UPenn and Morris Arboretum. And I think it was Elizabeth Zacharias, uh, who I think is still at Penn, who took the notes, because they were looking for endangered species in and around that area. I can make a call back to both of them, see what notes they have and see what their suggestions are. Because I know that their discussions made it into the big, uh, Bucks County Natural Areas Inventory. And that was one of the locations that was important. So I do know the two botanists who I got to slog through the wet, wetlands and pick dogwood or dog rosewood thorns out of my jacket for the next two or three months afterwards. But let me make a phone call out to them and see what suggestions they have, because they may have, they might have notes on what are the best locations and ideas on what's the best way to move forward with this, because they were part of the reason that we got money to actually preserve the property.
Okay, thank you. Um, move, anything else, Vera?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the Conservation Committee report.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Collingwood. Yep.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Shermer. All those signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda is the Commission Report Police Commission, Chief Dickinson. How are you, sir?
Good evening. How are you all doing? I have the July twenty-twenty-two Activity Report. Uh, for the month of July, the Penner Regional Police Department responded to seven hundred and five calls for service. Two hundred and ninety-eight of those calls were in East Rock Hill Township. The remaining four oh seven were in West Rock Hill Township. The department handled twenty-seven traffic crashes. Uh, twelve of those crashes were reportable. Fifteen of them were non-reporter, reportable, excuse me, with eleven occurring in East Rock Hill and the remaining sixteen in West Rock Hill. Our officers responded to seven Part One crimes and forty-seven Part Two crimes, uh, for a total of forty-nine crimes for the month of July. Um, East Rock Hill Township reported crimes. We had five theft reports, two drug complaints, three disturbances, one harassment complaint, three trespasses and nine ordinance violations consisting of one fireworks complaint, two reports of scattering rubbish, three dog law violations and three nuisance complaints. In West Rock Hill Township, we had two burglaries, one assault, two frauds, two criminal mischiefs, one sex offense, four narcotic complaints, one DUI, one harassment, five reports of a disturbance, six reports of trespassing. And we had five ordinance violations consisting of one scattering of rubbish, two dog law violations and two nuisance complaints. Uh, criminal charges filed for the month of July were twenty-one total with two charges of criminal mischief, one charge of DUI, six charges of possession of drugs, six charges of drug paraphernalia, one stalking charge, four charges of trespassing and a non-traffic citation issued for a dog law violation. Uh, other police activities for the month of July, we had a hundred and fifty-nine traffic details, traffic enforcement details. We issued thirty-four citations and twenty-nine traffic warnings. Obviously with school not being session, we did not do any school checks. Uh, we conducted a hundred and three park checks, six foot patrols, and our officers attended fifty-two hours of training. So for the year twenty-twenty-two, we had five thousand two hundred and eighty-two calls for service so far. A hundred and seventy-one accidents were reported, two hundred and sixty-five offenses were reported, a hundred and nineteen criminal charges have been filed, and our officers have attended a hundred and ninety-eight hours of training, uh, to this point of the year. And that is your July chief's report. Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody have any questions for the chief?
I do. David Collingwood, chief, well done. I appreciate it. Um, the very last, uh, um, bracket of information you get, gave us, uh, two thousand twenty-two totals to date. Uh, good information, uh, perhaps you could maybe in the future think about, uh, providing, uh, two oh two two versus two oh two one for the same, uh, five categories, just to kind of give us an idea of if we're going up, down or staying sort of, uh, level with the, the calls for service, accidents, offenses, criminal charges and hours of training. This is a suggestion.
Yeah, um, I, I can tell you that for the most part, with the exception, with the exception, excuse me, of hours of training, they're, they're about the same as they were last year. The calls for service are a little bit, but that's a little bit of a change in the way that we report our data. But for next month, I'll, uh, make that adjustment.
Appreciate it. Thank you. No other questions.
Thank you. Okay.
No questions for the chief.
All right.
Was there at the meeting.
I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
All right, motion's been made.
Second, David Collingwood.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Collingwood. All those signify by saying aye. All right. Thank you. Thank you, chief. Okay, moving forward, next on the agenda is the Joint Rec Authority, Jan Dietz.
And actually I'll be giving the presentation for, uh, Chair, Chairwoman Dietz, because she is down at the shore.
Okay, great.
So I'm just, we have essentially six quick things to go over. Uh, the first is we are now clarifying the chain of command and the way that we find out about how things are billed and who gets to send out checks, debits and other requests for payments, because we have had a little bit of lack of clarity in that. And we are aggressively making sure that that is now clear about how things proceed through the Holiday House Board rather than at the administrative level. Uh, we are going through with the grant for feasibility, which is looking at upgrading piping, electric floor grates, et cetera. So we are looking at ways of getting funding coming in from state grants in order to upgrade the site, working with skimmers, the coping, everything else. Uh, we also are working on sustainability and any way of bringing in additional income. Uh, those have included looking at, and as I mentioned before, we'll probably be talking to Mr. Miller about one of the things, now that the YMCA building is down, that seems to be a perfect location for a similar-sized solar array to what West Rock Hill has, which would allow some income, which would offset the basic services and the basic costs and hopefully pay for the electric bill for Holiday House so that nobody else has to. Uh, we are then also looking at, we have, and Jan did include the financials, going over the information of where everything's coming in. In the interim, we actually have fired the mowing guy because he wasn't listening. And we are trying to cut back on any costs for mowing. So we actually have two board members who are taking over mowing and doing that as a free service to help the community. We also expect that chief didn't mention it, but we had a couple of people decided to, uh, go through the fence and start spray painting the inside of the pool. So we expect we'll have two, three or four people who will be doing community service and helping you clean up the pool for the next, uh, couple of months or month or two or three. Uh, finally, we actually had Tim Huffnagle, who was a local historian, who had compiled his information on the history of Holiday House, uh, back when it actually was a trolley destination for people getting out of the city to come up. He gave a very good presentation. He's got very good files. So we're looking forward to working with the Phil, the West Rock Hill Historical Society or Sellersville Historical Society, which is, uh, closely tied in to Mr. Huffnagle on presenting the history of Holiday House and even perhaps getting that information over to the elementary school across the street. Uh, and that's about it. So we are trying to find other ways of getting income, other ways of getting, reaching out to the community. And we will be asking and promoting the uh, memberships earlier this year, because we did have a bit of a disconnect with getting that information out earlier last year.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for, uh, Mr. Shermer?
I do have David Collingwood. I have quite a few. Um, number one, I'm looking at the memo that was put out by the, the chairwoman. Uh, we're waiting for the outcome of, uh, the grant for feasibility study. Do we have any idea when that might be?
Uh, expected mid-September to mid-October.
Okay, and you're talking about upgrades, remodeling of the bathroom and changing areas, uh, upgrades to the snack bar, the pump house, piping, electrical floor grates. It, the list goes on and on and on. Do you have any idea what kind of costs, uh, will be associated with those, uh, upgrades?
Uh, as much as we can afford. About ten years ago, there was a study which pegged it at about five hundred thousand. We're not going to get that, so whatever money we can get from grants is what we're going to use to fix up what we can.
Okay, so if we have some costs that we, we don't even know exactly what they are, but we know we're going to have some considerable costs operational-wise, just to keep the pool, just to bring it up to snuff, um.
Well, it can, it, the pool can be up and running, but it's going to be held together with a Band-Aids, bubble gum and duct tape. So it can run, but as I said, about ten years ago, there was a study. Uh, I think I did put that into the Dropbox for the supervisors and mentioned it. But, you know, ten years ago, we were told this is going to be half a million dollars to do a total refit and bring everything up to what it should be. At that time, we were looking at competing with Percacy, uh, which basically became a water park instead of simply a pool. Uh, what we need to do to compete in the current time is why we are now updating that assessment. And we're going back and using that assessment to figure out what is it that we have to do in order to keep this as a pool, not necessarily to turn this into a mini Dorney Park, Wildwood or Kingdom.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I understand that. Um, but when I looked at your sustainability, um, I'm not sure that purse bingo is going to get you there. Uh, I think solar panels is a great idea anywhere that they're incorporated, but, uh, I believe the township put a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in, um, the, into the purchase of, uh, the solar panels. And I, I just sometimes wonder if, you know, I think we have like six other pools in the area. And some of them, like Quakertown Percacy and Sodderton, have done some major, major improvements. I, 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 I just wonder sometimes if we are, if we're oversaturated with pools in the area. And I'm, I'm, I've asked this probably two months ago. I was looking for some idea of what the one-year plan, the five-year plan and the ten-year plan is for the pool. And I think that's one of the, um, things that we really have to focus on to figure out where we're going with this. to figure out where we're going with this uh facility.
Oh, uh, the, essentially the one-year plan is, part of it is publicity and getting signs out the same way they used to have signs going out to Homestead Campground to let people know that there is a pool. Uh, I know personally I ran the numbers of everybody who's moved into the area in the last five years and we had about five hundred, six hundred people who've moved in, but we were try- we were going to contact before we decided, before we realized we didn't have the money to pay the people and we didn't have the people to actually open the pool. So we have several hundred people and I know that it's important that we draw more people in from West Rock Hill, so we have an even balance of users of the pool between Sellersville Borough and West Rock Hill Township. So the first thing is getting people to know that we have a pool, that it's there and it's available because there are a lot of people who just never knew. They, it hasn't really been publicized. It hasn't really been a focus of civic discourse or discussion. We're looking at trying to bring over, you know, members from St. Luke's, members from Grandview Hospital that, hey, you guys can actually have a place to go out. You got a break, walk ten minutes across the street, go sit out, take a swim, go sit out on the lawn chair. Uh, we've discussed all kinds of different ways of finding uh additional revenue, finding additional clientele and people who are interested. First by advertising to the new people, also recommending it to everybody else. We have, we still have, I believe, a certificate which would allow the property to be used as a daycare worst case. I know that the Penrose School District is looking for another uh ninety by ninety baseball field. We actually happen to have one. We're hoping we can offload some of the mowing costs and the maintenance costs and provide another location for baseball for the middle school, elementary school or high school. Uh, so we are, at this point, we have a pretty much turned o- turnover in the board. So we are looking at all different kinds of ways of coming up with new plans and we expect that we're gonna try a bunch of them. The bunch of them aren't gonna work, but hopefully some of them do.
Thank you.
Is that all, Mr. Collingwood?
That's it for now, yes.
Okay, I wanna make one, one comment, one brief comment that I think is important because um I've tried to to uh relay this here in past years. The, the reason the pool didn't open this year was because of personnel, not because of cost. We contributed our money, but we couldn't get enough lifeguards. I want everybody to understand that. I think the importance here is making sure you have to make sure you have the lifeguards to man that pool before you spend all kinds of money to move the pool into opening operation. That's just my opinion. Uh, I know it's hard, but and I also know we've all discussed what kids make at Wawa compared to what our lifecards, lifecards make, so that should be a uh priority discussion that that I think at your, your uh board meeting, when you do discuss that is, you know, making sure that you have lifeguards in place, you know, well.
And I, and we have, and I ha- I on behalf of the board have already contacted uh the legislative aide for Craig Stat to see about changing the way that you get certification to be a lifeguard so that it goes through the calendar year rather than cutting off at the end of June or July, so we lose most of our lifeguards because they want to compete in college sports and swimming, so we're working on it and we're well aware of the problems of keeping lifeguards. Uh, the YMCA years ago used to sponsor certification and at the last school board meeting that I attended, we did bring, I did bring that up, that there is interest, at least apparently from Penrose School District in coordinating with getting the Penrose School swimmers who wanna be a lifeguard certified and finding some way of funding that, supporting that and moving forward with that. So it's a problem for everybody and now everybody's actually thinking about solutions, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, I'd make a motion that we approve the Joint Rec Authority report.
I'll second it, David Collingwood.
Motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye. I abstain cuz I gave the presentation.
Thank you. All right, moving forward, then next on the agenda is the tax collector's report, Suzanne Clark.
Okay, for the month of August, uh for annual taxes, I've collected two thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-two cents. Uh, twenty twenty-two interims, ten dollars and seventy-three cents and one street light tax of thirty-five sixty-one. Um, that's it for my collections. I just wanna make sure everybody knows that the July one school tax bills that were issued are now due in discount by the thirty-first of August. Um, and or if you're gonna pay installment, that first installment is also due the thirty-first of August. Um, and I do have extra collection hours in the month of August and they are stated on my tax bill. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Suzanne?
I have no questions.
No questions.
Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved, David Collingwood.
Seconded, Shermer.
Motion made in second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Suzanne. Moving forward, next on the agenda is the engineer's report, Mr. Bala.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so the first item we had was the Green Top Road subdivision uh or conditional final approval. The applicant late this afternoon informed us that they're withdrawing from the agenda because they don't have their sewage planning module information back from DEP yet. Um, the one hit up there is their review period expires before the September meeting. So I have advised them to get us a uh extension in time, but I would recommend uh just in case that you make a motion uh to conditionally deny uh the Green Top Road subdivision plan unless an extension is received uh by the end of the week.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it, David Collingwood.
Okay, thank you. Motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, that brings us to the Moser Construction Subdivision Plan. I believe there are rep-
Mike Carr here.
Here tonight.
Mike Carr from Eburne Gray here, and I believe we have the applicant Ed Moser and our engineer, Rachel Book.
Hi, Rachel, I'm here.
Thank you. This has been with the Planning Commission for a long time, but not before the board, so maybe you can give us a little overview of where we're at with the subdivision.
Yeah, Rachel, can you um sort of run through the nature of the property, the nature of the application and the nature of the um the evolution of the plan? I know M- Mrs. Leidy is here and um would like to hear how it addresses her concerns, so if you touch on that as well.
Sure. So this is a, it's a two-lot subdivision that it's approximately eight acres. Um, the, the one lot is significantly bigger than the other. Lot one is um, excuse me, is uh two point six acres and the other lot is five point four acres. Um, so we prepared plans for this two-lot subdivision back in April of twenty twenty-one. Uh, we submitted them to the township and Wynn Associates reviewed them in June. Uh, shortly after that, we met with the Planning Commission where we had a um healthy discussion about the plan, um about some of the review comments. Um, I'll say there were, there were two kind of main talking points that we discussed and we ultimately ended up deciding to revise the plans, resubmit and um get another review from Wynn before coming to the board. Um, so the two kind of main things that we talked about with the Planning Commission were related to the runoff from the Moser property that uh discharges that goes towards the lady property. Um, and the others related to the woodland's preservation. Um, so the, as far as the runoff for the lady property, what we ended up doing is we actually create, we, the original plan had one rain garden, so we now have two rain gardens. Um, and we shifted the location of the rain garden on the lot that's the closest to the ladies. We shifted it farther back downstream uh uh down, down the property so that the discharge is farther away from, from the buildings and from the residents on the ladies. Uh, we actually discussed that with, yeah, the ladies had uh their own engineer look at it and we did discuss it with them, so um we kind of resolved that was, that was one of the main things that the Planning Commission had, um that we talked about the Planning Commission. Um, the other uh topic was related to the woodlands. So as far as, we're, we're looking at this, as far, there's conservation easement that is required to be um applied to this property, so we're kind of taking the most conservative approach where we're assuming that the entire property is completely forest, completely forested, which then requires uh about four point eight acres of area to be protected and easement. Um, so the discussion was, you know, where, what's allowed to be in that easement? Where does it fall on the property? Um, you know, what's, what's reasonable for a reasonable use of, of a future home homeowner? Um, so what we ended up doing is moving the rain garden away from, it was, it was originally proposed in an area that had been forest successfully, so we're, we kind of shifted it back to an area that's more open. Um, so that the intent there was to, to identify the woodlands that had been successfully uh far- uh reforested and to, and to save them. Um, so that was kind of the main kind of talk there.
Excuse me. Excuse me, Rachel. Excuse me, Rachel. Mike, could you mute your mic there, please? Thank you. Go ahead, Rachel, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. So I mean, that was kind of, that's kind of summarizing where we left off with the Planning Commission, so we, I guess that we revised those plans. Um, submitted back to, to Wynn's office and then we have a um uh a current, another review to um to discuss.
Thank you. Okay, any, any questions regarding that matter? Being none?
I have none as listening into the meeting, so I'm up to date.
We can move forward then on that, right?
Excuse me, uh but when would I get to make a comment?
You may make one now if you would like.
I, I would like to make one now. Um, and something else may come up, but um I would like to know about um the preservation of, of the trees. Um, that was just mentioned, so there is a plan to keep as many trees on the property as possible?
If, if I may, we, we have, um, there was a zoning decision many, many years ago, decades ago, um, that uh determined that the property needed to be reforested. Um, it had been cleared by a prior owner uh hoping to turn it into a horse farm and that clearing was determined to be in violation of the zoning ordinance and uh zoning hearing board decision resulted in a decision that it needed to be reforested. A reforestation effort was made and uh it largely, uh, well, i- i- it partially succeeded, so um, the township signed off on it and we have complied with the terms of the zoning ordinance in terms of protection of uh of woodlands. And we have tried to keep our improvements away from the significant woodlands. And we've managed to accomplish that, I believe, to the satisfaction of the Planning Commission. And we are willing to enter into a conservation easement that continues to protect those woodlands. Uh, Mary and I, um, I'm sure can work out the precise language of that easement. Um, you know, does it allow equestrian activities? Does it allow fencing, that sort of stuff, but we're not gonna go a- allow homeowners to come in and clear woodlands.
Okay, well, one of my questions is, um, the new owners that buy the property, is this conservation easement and what needs to happen to that property going to be relayed to them? And how will that work in the future? I mean, are they gonna be told this is a con- conservation easement and there are certain provisions on this property? Will that be rel- relayed to the new owner?
Absolutely. It will be a note and we'll make sure that it's conveyed in very uncertain terms.
Okay, and, and who makes-
Mrs. Leidy?
Yeah.
Hi, it won't, and it won't only be a plan note. There'll be a specific document that's recorded at the Office of the Recorder of Deeds, so when future owners go to settlement, it's not just going to be like the general exception, like plan notes on such and such a plan. There'll be a document entitled Conservation Easement for-
Wonderful, wonderful. And, and who polices that? I hate to use that word, but who makes sure that that's done, like that nothing is, that that easement is enforced?
Well, if um the township does, if the township sees activity on the property in the future that violates the terms of the easement, um, the township would take action.
Wonderful, good to hear. And um I also have a question on the swale. The last time this came up, there was quite a conversation on the swale uh either being on the Landis property or the Moser property. And I don't think it was shown on the plan at that time, the swale. Has that been resolved?
Um, Rachel may be better able to address this than me, but uh then there was a suggestion that we do work on neighboring property. Um, we obviously don't have the ability to do that without permission. Um, if you would like to cooperate with us and allow work on your property, if that's the most appropriate way to accomplish it.
Well, I don't believe it's our property, Mike. I believe that it's um the Landis property and getting an easement from the Landis property is going to be a condition of approval.
And um uh going back to that, I spoke with um Scott Landis last night and Scott Landis, both of his parents just passed away uh within a few days of each other in their services this week, so right now he's told me he cannot wrap his mind around any of this. But he did say that no one has ever contacted him about putting a swale on their property. And I think that's why I'm bringing it up because I think that swale is what's needed to help divert some of this um runoff. And if it's not shown on the plan, I don't think it should be approved until this swale is decided on where it is going. And my other question with that is where was this swale empty into? Because is there a concern for the um uh Shafna property at the back? Does it enter on that property or where does the swale go to?
I, I can kind of explain that. We, there's, there's kind of two scenarios that are feasible, I guess, at this point. So right now there's a pipe that collects runoff from the Landis property and it kind of straddles the property line and it, part of it is on the Landis property and part of the pipe is on the Moser property. Um, and that pipe then discharges to a swale that's there now that goes through the Moser property that ends up discharging onto your property, onto the lady property. So the grading plan now kind of addresses that in multiple kind of weight, so the plan right now shows a swale that would take that pipe discharge from the Landis property and direct it into the rain garden, which is on lot two. And so it would be slowed down and captured there before it would have a chance to spill over to the rear of the property. There's also a diversion berm between lot one and lot two which would not allow that runoff, any runoff that doesn't make it to the rain garden. It would be caught by that berm that divides lot one and lot two and then be directed into the rain garden on lot one. And then lot, the rain garden on lot one then discharges to that level spreader. Um, so the grading scheme now takes that swale that cuts through the property and, and completely eliminates it and, and directs the, the runoff, you know, in an inappropriate uh safe way. Uh, there have been discussions about removing that pipe completely, which is certainly an option, and I think that's something that, that Mr. Moser has been trying to, you know, to pursue. Um, but the plan now shows if that doesn't happen, that the, the grading scheme is, is uh still functional and safe. Um, so, you know, the, the swale and if that, if that pipe were to be removed, there is a swale already on Landis's property that the water could then be um kind of just redirected toward.
Okay, but, but am I wrong that originally there was a swale shown on your print? The one prior to this?
We, you're right. There, the previous version of the plan showed a little bit more of an extensive grading swale on the Landis property, which we removed because we haven't yet secured permission from him to do that work.
Um, Steve?
I, I, Mrs. Leidy, if you don't mind, I'd, I'd like to work through this issue with the township engineer engineer because he and I both had a different understanding when we prepared for this meeting.
You know, I would like.
Mrs. Leidy, just please give us a minute and let Steve answer this.
Okay. I guess to reflect on what Rachel Butch was just saying, I don't believe the rain garden on that upper lot was designed to accommodate the runoff from that swale off of the Landis property. My understanding or my recollection was the drainage shed does not include all that runoff from the Landis property. That said, you know, our understanding was that that swale would be diverted to the rear of this property, either on the Landis property or on the Moser property, but not necessarily go through the rain garden. If it's diverted on the Landis property, which prior plans did show, that would require an easement. If it's diverted on the Moser property, it's owned by the Mosers and he could do that, you know, grading on his own, on his own lot if it's reflected on the plan. So I think that's still a gray area that does need to be clarified.
Well, Mrs. Leidy, just one more thing. I know that you want to speak, but I want to try and work this out for you the best that we can.
I appreciate that.
You explained to me this morning that there was previously a swale that stopped the water from going on to the Leidy property and that it was relocated at some point in time, not in association with the land development plan, but it was relocated. And that part of this plan was reinstalling that swale to give the Leidys relief from some of the stormwater that's gone on to their property. Isn't that what you told me?
Generally, yes. And that's what we're talking about, the water that came off of the Landis property and which direction flowed in years ago.
Wouldn't we recommend to the board that one of the conditions of approval would be reinstalling that swale and securing the easements necessary to do that to help both Scott Landis and the Leidys?
Yes. But I think what the Moser team is saying, that they could also re-divert that swale on their own property instead of on the Landis property.
Agreed.
Which may be so, but I'd need to see that on the plan of how it was to be done.
Yeah. We had hired our own engineer also, and I know that he spoke to the township engineer and if.
Okay. I'm sorry. I just want to make you aware. Your two and a half minutes have been up about a minute ago. So go ahead and finish that, Mrs. Leidy, please.
Well, I would appreciate if the township engineer, we continue to work with our engineer to rectify this problem because the erosion over the years has taken out a lot of trees. It's put a gully in our hayfields. So it's something that we would like to see corrected before this goes forward. We do not object to the building. We just want this problem resolved so it does not continue to erode our hayfields and our trees that we're losing.
My recommendation to the board would either be that the applicant agree to a condition tonight or go back to the township engineer and work through this issue and come back next month if they want approval of something other than approval with the condition that they secure the necessary easements from Landis's and Leidy's.
I would agree on behalf of the applicant to a condition that we resolve this issue to the satisfaction of the township engineer.
That's not what I said, Mike.
I understand that, but I don't know whether I can agree to a condition that we, you know, obtain an easement from a neighbor who, you know, frankly, were not really able to, you know, compelled to give us an easement. And so if we can do it on our property and Steve is happy, then we're all happy, assuming that Mrs. Leidy is in agreement with that.
Then I would recommend to the board, and then I'll stop talking. I would recommend to the board that if they are not comfortable with the easement that I've suggested, that they go take the month and find out if they can get the necessary easement to make the engineer happy and come back with next, come back next month.
David Collingwood, I am not comfortable. I think we should wait a month and get this right. There's just too much at stake here.
Hang on. I'm talking to Ed there.
While we have a quiet time, Mr. Shermer, I'd like to see something on a plan drawn in before we move forward. So I think I'm agreeing with David.
Thank you. Okay.
It doesn't have to be really detailed, but I want to see something on paper showing where it is and what it's going to do.
Okay. You folks have your direction, okay?
And I do have one comment for the 30-something people. This is the very end of Augustine Road, which means when you're coming down 309, this is where the 309 bypass goes from being in a cut into being even with the land because nobody else knows where the Moser subdivision is unless you're a zoning geek or a planning commission geek. So this is the end of Augustine Road, left side of 309 bypass.
Steve, or how are we on the 90 days?
They had given us an indefinite extension way, way back when, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Unless they withdraw their extension, that's, we're good.
Okay. So I'm going to table this till next month at the direction of Mr. Collingwood and Mr. Shermer. And we will revisit, we will revisit this next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. That brings us, the next item is the Wawa sketch plan that requested to be on the agenda. So I believe there's a representative here tonight to discuss this.
Yes. Thank you very much. Julie Von Sprickelson from the law firm of Eastburn and Gray here tonight on behalf of the applicant Propco Pineville Acquisition LLC. Joining me this evening are Mike Cooley on behalf of the applicant, Chris Pazinus is the project civil engineer on behalf of Bowler Engineering. And Matt Hammond is the project traffic engineer from Traffic Planning and Design. You've heard a brief overview from Mr. Durstein, and he did a great job explaining briefly what the project is proposing. I want to go a little bit out of order, if I may, and have our traffic engineer speak first. He has to leave the call, but I just, we are very early in this process as discussed. We're only at sketch plan, but I wanted to him, him to just explain a little bit about what he's looked at thus far in the process. Matt?
Hey, just real quick. This is Mike Cooley. I'm the applicant. Matt Hammond has been kind enough to take time away from his family on his vacation. So he does, only has a few minutes here to get back to his family on his family vacation. So Matt, go ahead and just do, do what you can, and we understand if you have to jump. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much, guys, and I appreciate the understanding. So essentially where we're at and the kind of similar sentiment that, you know, with respect to the planning commission last week, we understand that traffic is a big issue, especially for Wawa type use. We're aware of the various uses proposed, the various developments proposed in the area, the three warehouses. I do believe the one on Cattle Hill Road is probably less likely to occur based on what I've heard so far, just because of the relief that they're seeking. But regardless, that's, that's something that we're going to be including in a future traffic study. Where we're at now is we've submitted a scoping application to both the township and PennDOT. We've received comments from the township traffic engineer and outlined a lot of different things that they'd like us to look at and to include in the traffic study, namely the intersection of State and Meeting House. Provide a very comprehensive look at that in terms of are there auxiliary turn lanes necessary, the installation of a traffic signal thing of that nature. So those are things that are going to be taken into account when the traffic studies repaired. We're waiting on comments back from PennDOT based on that scoping application, just so that we can make sure that we're covering all of our bases when we complete the traffic study. We also have been in contact with TripleNet at the request of the township to kind of look at, at least start discussions on TripleNet and Mike and Wawa looking at the state road corridor in a comprehensive fashion. Basically, you know, TripleNet looking at things, Wawa looking at things, and then coming together to kind of figure out how we can both implement what would be possibly necessary along that corridor. We have proposed two access points, one on State Road, one on Meeting House. State Road is state-owned and maintained roadway, so we'll need a highway occupancy permit for PennDOT for that access point. It is shown as full access right now. We are, it's possible that we would only see a right-in, right-out, left-in from PennDOT, no left-out because it's proximity to the intersection. But that's something that we'll look at in the traffic study, submit to the township and PennDOT for review, and obviously go through the process. I do know that the warehouse on the north side of Meeting House Road, that is a little bit further along, and I do understand certain improvements that they are proposing or completing along State Road, namely a westbound right turn lane. So we're going to take that into account as well, but we're going to look at this corridor comprehensively with the other developments and then prepare the necessary documents and hopefully we'll be able to submit them and continue dialogue with the township with respect to the traffic aspects of things. And that's what I got.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mike Cooley to introduce his company. They have not yet developed within the township, so I thought it appropriate that Mike provide some background on the company. Mike?
Thanks, Julie. Thank you to the board members. Good evening. Thanks for allowing us the time. My name's Mike Cooley, as Julie said, from the Propco Group. We're developers based out of Villanova. I am the applicant. We are the equitable owner of the subject property. I've been what Wawa refers to as a preferred developer for Wawa for about 15 years. And what that role entails is me working very closely with the real estate department and helping identify opportunities for either new store development or relocating some of their older stores. So we've done some extensive studies throughout this, this area, and we've identified this site that meets all the Wawa criteria. And we look forward to presenting the detailed plan and discussing it and answering any and all of your questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike. Greg, may I share the screen? I'd like to just start by showing an existing conditions.
Sure. Just give, there you go.
Let's see if I can do this. Okay. So as you can see, hopefully you can see this.
No, you haven't shared.
Hold on one second.
You have to choose a window or a tab.
Yeah, I'm trying to get there. Let's do a tab. I'm having an issue. Let's see, Chris Pazinus, are you able to? Share your screen?
Yep.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. There we go. So now you can see the existing conditions area and the property is 3060 Old State Road. As you can see, the vast majority of it is vacant, but there are the improvements along the frontage of Meeting House. And I, I have this aerial up for your view just to show the nature of the neighborhood and the community and to show that this is a very business oriented community here. There's, there's a lot of business uses. The vast majority of the properties have business uses on them. There are some residential uses. There are some single-family dwellings immediately behind the property in question and then also across from State Road. But they are also surrounded by other businesses such as Fresco Systems and BioBombs and tenant manufacturing, et cetera. So it's a very business oriented area, which is consistent with the zoning because it is zoned PI, which is planned industrial. Chris, if you could switch over to the rendered version of the plan that we have. So again, Mr. Durstein gives a pretty significant background of what we are proposing, but just to expand upon it a bit, again, the Propco Pineville Acquisition LLC is the equitable owner of 3060 Old State Road and then also equitable owner of a portion of 3068 Old State Road. And you can see the existing property is the red line that Chris is pointing out for you, and it goes from Old State to State Road. And so there are two lots there. And what the applicant is proposing is to consolidate the two parcels and then re-subdivide the consolidated parcel into two lots. Lot one would be the, what we're referring to as the Wawa lot on State Road and Meeting House. That'd be about 2.85 acres. A Wawa convenience store of 6,049 square feet with indoor seating is proposed along with eight multi-product fuel dispensers and an A-frame canopy over those fuel dispensers. As is typical with Wawa, there's air pumps in the northwest area of the property that Chris is pointing to. 70 parking spaces are proposed. Seven of those spaces are oversized spaces for the larger vehicles to park. In addition, the trash enclosure is located in the southeastern portion of the property as well. And because this is a larger site, a little bit of a larger site, there's the ability to provide extensive buffering. So you can see the green area that surrounds the perimeter of the property, and that would all consist of green area and dense buffering. There are two access points, as Matt described, on State Road and then the other on Meeting House Road. The other property, as you can see, Chris is showing you the other property area, about 2.1 acres, and that has an existing multifamily residence, a detached garage and a shed. And those improvements would stay on the property as is, and that property would actually be owned by the Blums. They currently own the property and they will maintain that property. So that's a brief overview of what is being proposed. And you heard Matt Hammond go through the traffic improvements. Again, we're very, very early on in this project, but we did receive a sketch plan review letter from Wynn Associates dated August 13th. And we are prepared to run through the comments if you would like us to. However, we did run through the comments with the planning commission. The first few comments are zoning-related issues that Mr. Durstein has touched on and that we know that need to be addressed. The remainder of the comments relate to subdivision land development ordinance issues, and we know that those will have to be addressed much further down the line as we progress further. Planning Commission had some comments mainly about traffic. So at this point, unless there's any questions, what I can do is also get right into applicant's request to extend the hours of operation to 24 hours as the ordinance limits this use to hours of operation from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Any comments regarding that matter from my fellow supervisors?
David Collingwood, I'm just wondering if we're putting the cart before the horse here. We're, we're, we're being asked to consider a 24-hour operation, and this is really early in this process. We don't know where this, where this sketch plan is going to go. I mean, I know that traffic is a major, major concern. We talk about the word oversized spaces. I don't know what oversized spaces means, but I can tell you that I've heard that, well, it's only going to be used for landscapers and white box trucks, but how do you stop tractor trailers even if they don't come into the actual compound of where the store is? They're going to park along, as I see them on 309 near other Wawas and other convenience stores next to Burger King, they're going to stop on State Road and jump out and run and grab a sandwich or whatever. I just think we have a lot of issues that we have to work. I just think we have a lot of issues that we have to work through here if indeed this gets to, to approval before we start talking about twenty four hours of operation.
And Mr. Collins, I, I don't disagree with you. I agree that there's issues that need to be worked through. Um, the problem for us is that with regard to your ordinance requirements, um, it's a bit of an anom- anomaly because this use is not provided for within your ordinance. A convenience store with fuel use is not provided for. It's one use, but in your ordinance, in West Rock Hill Township ordinance, it's an E eight motor vehicle fuel station use plus an E nine convenience store. And there's a number of criteria that have to be met with regard to both of those uses. And one of them discusses the hours of operation and limits the hours of operation for both of those uses from six AM to eleven PM. However, it allows those hours to be extended if approved by the Board of Supervisors.
I understand that.
And so, so now we're in a position that we know that we're going to need zoning relief, but we also have this issue that's now in your zoning ordinance that says the board has to approve it. So we're kind of caught in a difficult situation that we, if we have to ask for zoning relief for the hours of operation, if the board doesn't approve it, we would like to obtain zoning relief, everything we need at one time. So we're in this situation that it is difficult which comes first here. But that's why we came in and we thought that we would ask for a direction on this issue. Depending on how the board feels about this issue, we may look to ask for a variance from that provision because it's in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you, David. Um, I have, oh, go ahead, Hal. Sorry.
Yep, I did want to chime in that the actual language of that provision does provide supervisors may think wave or change the timeframe. However, part of that is incorporating the concerns of the neighbors, which sounds like we need to get input from the neighbors before we can legally make a decision. I'm not sure if that's a hearing. I'm not sure if that's a kind of sorta conditional use, but it does say that we need to take into account concerns of the neighbors. And I think that does mean that we have to get input from the neighbors before we can make a decision based on concerns of the neighbors until we ask them.
If I, if I may, the, and Mary, please feel free to jump in on this issue, but it specifically says the board shall take into consideration the type of facility, the amount of usage and impact on adjoining properties. That's the exact language and I'm prepared to address all three of those, uh, criteria tonight. Um, and I think it's important that I do, but we do need some type of direction because if we don't receive it, we're going to have to ask for a variance from the zoning hearing board. This provision unfortunately is in your zoning ordinance. Your zoning ordinance is governed by your zoning hearing board. So if we need relief from the zoning ordinance, we need to go to the zoning hearing board. You don't ask for relief from the Board of Supervisors for zoning ordinance provisions typically. It's just how it's written in this ordinance. So that's why we're in sort of a catch twenty two. But if you let me just briefly address these issues of the type of facility, the amount of of usage and the impact, I'll be very brief, but I think it is important to point out, if I may.
You may, go ahead.
Thank you very much. So starting with the type of facility, the, the proposed use is a Wawa convenience store. And so the very nature of the operation and the business model of a convenience store is to provide exactly that, a convenience to the community. It's to be open, available and serve the public on a twenty four seven basis. And this is of particular importance to your invaluable employees, your shift workers. So that means hospital workers, doctors, nurses, technicians, EMTs, all hospital personnel, police, firefighters, factory workers. Anybody that's a shift worker expects the convenience store to be open twenty four hours and to serve them so that they can get food and drinks and money from the ATM to, to fuel their vehicles that they need. Um, these are invaluable employees and they need to be served and that's what Wawa proudly does. And Wawa is a part of the community and they work with the community to serve everybody. Um, in addition, the type of facility, the nature of a convenience store, the convenience store needs time to restock shelves, to prepare food and coffee. And, you know, for the morning rush, they need to take inventory, they need to clean. That's usually typically done on off hours. So the amount of usage may be less in these hours, but they're doing all this preparation work in order to serve the community. And that's why it's so important to be open, the twenty four seven. Um, with regard to impact, again, as I mentioned, the surrounding area is dominated by businesses here. And it's in the planned industrial zoning district. And the planned industrial zoning district doesn't even allow residential uses. Now we understand and Wawa understands, the applicant understands and appreciates that we have some single family dwellings behind the property and, and across State Road. Um, and that's why they're proposing significant amount of buffering around the perimeter of the property. Um, there's, there's large green area, dense buffering will be proposed. The planning commission mentioned, hey, how about birmingham? And we think that's a great idea. There's plenty of room to put birmingham, dense buffering, evergreen trees, opaque fencing, and all of this severely cuts down on the impact to abutting properties, properties in the area. Um, with regards to the lighting, the lighting is all contained on the site. There is no spillage. There is no light trespass. The canopy is A-frame. The lighting all points down on the site. There's no uplighting. It's dark sky compliant. So Wawa understands and knows that they serve communities and there are a lot of times above residential communities. So Wawa is very familiar with providing all of these mitigating uh, factors that can reduce and as much as possible impacts on the community. So it's these competing interests that Wawa knows that they have to serve and they do it very well. They also limit delivery hours to, um, hours that are not between eleven PM and six PM. They can limit, um, and restrict when the trash is picked up. So they take all these steps and make all these efforts to mitigate and be a part of the community. Um, Mike, please feel free to jump in and add.
Yeah, Julie, that, that was very well said. Thank you so much for going through that. And, and what's going through my mind is a couple of things. One, if you look at the site plan, you know, we're, we're, we're only proposing to develop just slightly more than half of the property. Uh, the rear couple acres, uh, I think Mary Everly and I discussed this on our initial call. We have no plans whatsoever to develop that property. And we would be open to discussing perhaps donating that for open space or park space for the community or making it a dog park for the neighbors or something of that nature. These restricting it for other uses.
I, I, I don't think we talked about that. I don't think the township wants the responsibility.
Well, you and I talked about possibly limiting the uses on it.
Let me, let me just finish. Uh, the property adjacent to a Wawa. But, um, there should be some kind of deed restriction to, so it's clear it's not a building lot.
Well, Mary, I don't know how you deed restrict the property with, 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 um, you know, without, um, other, some consideration. I'm, I'm offering to perhaps dedicate it um, for public use. But with that being said, that would restrict the.
Taking dedication and it's very easy to, to deed restrict the property in this circumstance.
Right. So I, and I guess, um, looking at possible alternative uses, I mean, it's owned industrial. I would imagine that these distribution centers are operating on a twenty four hour basis with delivery trucks coming and going throughout the night. So I, I think, you know, looking at a neighborhood type Wawa convenience store, although it is open for twenty, twenty, you know, the night hours, twenty four hour, those hours see, you know, I don't want to underestimate it or understated, but it's, it's very, you know, they do very little business during those hours. Um, it is not busy. The peak hours are six AM, uh, to eight AM. You know, there's a typical lunch rush from, you know, from eleven to one and then the PM dinner rush. You know, once you get past, you know, ten, eleven, twelve o'clock at night, that, that, that business does get very quiet. So I, I think Julie summed it up nicely and would be glad to answer and any questions on it.
One question I have for you is, um, the, uh, you mentioned the trash. Are you going to have trash trucks there over the night hours from eleven to six?
Well, Julie said, we can, we can, we can designate the hours in which, um, you know, the, the trash trucks come and we can certainly, um, limit them to not come past certain hours, say eleven PM or ten PM to six AM. But they will, won't be picked up.
Okay. Well, and the other, the other comment I just want to make is, um, I do drive a commercial truck for a living during the day. And I know I've been passed a lot of Wawa's. You're going to have trucks there. Mr. Collingwood was right. You're going, you're going to have tractor trailers that try to come in there to get sandwiches or something. And I personally do not see, um, very much parking in the back for box trucks or even the possibility of tractor trailer. You're not putting any restrictions on them coming through there. Is that correct?
Yeah, we'll put it, you know, in, in our, in the, in the history of men, you know, there's nine hundred Wawa's that are open and operating. They have a lot of experience with, um, oversized vehicles. And you're, you're, I'm not going to disagree with you. There may be large trucks that try to park on, on the perimeter of the property. But I think large, you know, tractor trailer drivers understand how difficult it would be to try to come in and navigate this site if they weren't there specifically for a delivery to the store. Um, these sites are designed specifically not to accommodate the tractor trailer vehicles, but to accommodate the oversized vehicles like the landscape trucks and, um, perhaps box trucks. I think what we find is that the tractor trailers, they, you know, although they may, you see them once in a while parking along the perimeter, they do have their designated routes and, and their, their, their convenience stores like rudders and other type of convenience stores that do accommodate the tractor trailers. This is not designed to accommodate the fueling with the low volume nozzles. Um, and the drive aisle widths and, and the parking, um, aisle length and widths. So you're right. It's not designed to accommodate tractor trailers.
Okay. All right. Those are the questions I had there. As far as the twenty four hours, um, I do know that Wawa's do operate on twenty four hours, but, uh, this is going to be a tough sell. I mean, we should have some kind of input from, I think, uh, neighbors, Mr. Shermer was correct in, in stating that fact as far as whether we want to allow it. It is the board's decision, of course. But I'm a little bit reluctant.
And, and I understand that and, and I understand that I certainly, um, I, I just want to touch on something that, that Mike said too. And I, I just want to point out, um, really in fairness to the applicant here. If, if you look at your planned industrial district, um, just about every use does not have a limitation on hours of operation. And that's retail trade and retail service, a large retail store, an eating place with drive-through, a repair shop, automotive sales, car wash, mini storage, tavern, private indoor sports facility, theater, outdoor motion picture establishment, and then all of the G uses, which are uh, manufacturing, research, wholesale, contractor service, fuel storage and distribution, truck terminal, industrial animal production, equipment sales and storage, flex space, industrial park, recovery of subservice gas and oil deposits. Not one of them has a limitation of hours of operation. And, and you know, in fairness, and if you go even further, there are a couple that do. And the ones that do are, um, for example, adult entertainment, but that gets to stay open till twelve midnight. Wawa has to close at eleven, but an adult entertainment can stay open till twelve midnight. So it's very arbitrary. And so it's a bit unfair to this applicant. Um, so I know that you have some concerns, but this is a business district. This is an industrial district with businesses surrounding the property. Um, yes, there are a couple residences, absolutely. And we plan to mitigate any impacts by all the improvements that, um, we discussed would be made. So it's, it's also a fairness issue to this applicant.
I do understand that. And I know sometimes we don't like the end result because we do have to be fair. And the, uh, most of the businesses in areas can operate twenty four seven. So it's a very fine line that the board has to, uh, tread here. However, I didn't hear Mr. Collingwood or Mr. Shermer willing to change the hours of operation yet.
Perhaps we should table this, um, to give it some more thought. I, I'm only throwing that out there.
Oh, if, if I may, I did want to note that I think, uh, Ms. Von Speckson did make the point that, you know, our code does pick out certain uses which are good for the owner, but might not be so good for the neighbors. And that's why there is a time limit. I would also note that the requirement for the supervisors is to look at the and look at impact on adjoining properties when reviewing such requests. And our code makes a distinction between contiguous, which are the properties which share a boundary and adjoining are the properties which are nearby enough that they might be affected by this. So our code was written with the point that yes, there are certain businesses that are good for the business owner. They might not be so good for the neighbors. That's why we have a limit on the time. That's why we can have, why we are supposed to consider changes to the limit. But that's also why we have to get input from the neighborhood, not just the contiguous neighbors, but the entire neighborhood, which is why I think we have to take some time to actually do the job and find out what the impact on adjoining properties is before we can say anything.
Okay. All right. So I, I, I share your concern and, uh, I do understand how our ordinance is written, but I do believe that we should take another month and, and, uh, try and get some information from the, from the neighboring properties and stuff before we make a decision on changing time. Okay. I do see a, I do see a hand raised there. I will allow one question here regarding this matter. Anthony?
Hello. Thanks, Mr. Chairman, for my comment. Julie, I have a question.
Name, name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Anthony Bogner, uh, twenty nine twenty Climber Avenue. Um, you mentioned that, uh, you had a plan for mitigation for, uh, you mentioned, uh, zoning and who all lives in the area and the other businesses, but there are people that live, um, in that area. And, uh, I'd like to know what your mitigation plan is, uh, for the people, for the residents that do live in the area. You know, because as Jay said, there's a lot of concerns with people that live in the area. So, um, could you elaborate maybe on what your mitigation plan is?
Hey, Julie, I can, I can probably answer that pretty easy. So, so we've, um, Anthony, I appreciate your question. You know, I've developed, you know, many Wawa's and, and many, uh, areas in very close proximity adjacent to residential, uh, abutting residential and everything else. And we, and we come, you know, to, to townships in, in, you know, the most diplomatic way. I enjoy meeting with neighbors and Anthony, I, I can't answer that question until I meet with neighbors and understand what the concerns are. Because everyone may have different concerns and I can come up with a, a plan to best mitigate those concerns. Some neighbors might be lighting. Some they, some neighbors' concerns might be noise. Some neighbors' concerns might be buffering. You know, and we've come up with plans to, to, you know, work on buffering, planting taller trees, planting fences like Julie said, making sure the light, the lighting is, is, is downlit and it's, it's, there's cutoff shield. making sure the light, the lighting is 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 downlit and it's, it's, there's cutoff shield and things of that nature. So we're very open to working with neighbors, addressing the concerns and seeing if we can mitigate it, mitigate them and make everyone feel comfortable, for sure.
Well, I know as Jay stated that um, you know, each drives truck and stuff like that. And there's many a times I drive down three oh nine and there's uh a Sunoco down there and there's trucks parked along three oh nine because they, you know, not like you're, a parking lot isn't uh convenient, I want to say, but they pull on the side of three oh nine, they park, they get their sandwich, they get their um, and I just, I don't, you know, as a resident, I I don't want that. And um, you know, I I, and the twenty-four hour thing, um, you know, Julie, you know, referenced some other businesses in the area, but there's only a few that run twenty-four seven. And that's an issue that, and I um, you know, as a resident, I'm, I'm not for it. And and I do have to thank my fellow board members for um, you know, uh, you know, taking some consideration into us because it's not, um, you know, Julie mentioned about, you know, uh, Grandview and people going, you know, on lunch breaks and stuff like that. We'll go another exit down to one thirteen. There's another Wawa down there. It's only, it's only uh three point two miles. It it's not, it's not going to kill you to go to another exit to get a Wawa shorty or whatever you want to get down there.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, all right. Um, let's, let's table this till next month and we'll revisit this. And in that time, we'll have, we'll be able to have a little bit more uh correspondence with our residents. Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much, guys. Have a great night. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, Steve?
Okay, I have uh one more item under my report, and that's the authorization to advertise your revised stormwater management ordinance. I believe in your packet was a redlined copy of the stormwater management update. Uh, the bottom line is DEP has mandated this update for all MS four communities. Uh, they issued a new model ordinance for twenty twenty-two. We took their model ordinance and added the items that we were missing from from the model ordinance into our existing ordinance. We did not change any of our standards, per se. Uh, you know, it still has the same minimum requirements, the same exemptions are are still in the ordinance. But it added a bunch of definitions. It added new uh and updated references to the, to the current stormwater BMPs that DEP allows for different properties. And uh, just generally cleaned up some language and nomenclature through the ordinance. There's a bunch of stuff. That's why we did it as a, an overall rewrite because there's, if you look through the whole thing, there's, you know, forty-seven pages or something of the ordinance and and half of them have a change on it in some fashion. Uh, so I hope you're not going to say, please go through these items one by one because there's, there's hundreds of them. Uh, but needless to say, you don't have a lot of choice in this uh to maintain your MS four permit with the state. We have to report this year that we have amended our ordinance to be compliant with the uh new model ordinance.
Okay.
That's why we're asking for your authorization to advertise this for, you know, an upcoming meeting for approval.
Okay.
Steve?
Go ahead.
Steve, I'm sorry, but um, right now it's not in ordinance form. So are we, were you looking for authorization to advertise or direction from the board to put it in in ordinance form? Did, are you ready for it to be advertised or did you want to see it again once it's in ordinance form? And is there a deadline, Steve? Are we up against it?
No, we are up against it. It's September, but that's not the, the end of the world if we at least had it advertised. I I mean, Mary, it's not going to look significantly different in ordinance form. We're not, we're not going to change any of the
No, it's not.
It's just the, the format of how it's, how it's presented. Right? So could they do both, uh authorized to put it in ordinance form and advertise it?
Sure.
Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion for that.
I'll make that motion, David Collingwood.
Thank you, Mr. Collingwood.
I'll second the motion. I read the entire thing.
I did as well. All forty-seven pages.
The only, the only question I had is the uh duration of the storms because I'm more familiar with the hundred-year sto- hundred-year flood, which is one chance in a hundred. But I understand that the actual numbers for the stormwater basins are calculated a little bit differently, which was a little bit odd, but everything in there seemed to check out. So I'm good with doing both at this point.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. And Mary, I could get you the word document, so it'll be easier.
Okay.
That is all I have unless there's any questions.
I have none. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the engineer's report as presented.
So moved.
Sorry. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Steve. Moving forward, solicitor report, Mary Everly.
You're on mute, Mary. Mary, you're on mute.
It makes it quicker.
There you go.
I was finished with the whole solicitors report.
Let's approve it.
I'm with you. Anyway, the first item on this, under the solicitors report is that um, a public hearing and consideration of an ordinance that you reviewed at last month's meeting and authorized advertisement of prohibiting bar parking on Washington Avenue. So at the last month's meeting, if you recall, we said on months when school was in session. And when we just decided to say when school is in session, but I thought it might be easier just to say when days when school is in session. And that's what was advertised and that, if that's okay.
It's okay with me.
Fine with me.
You would ask for public comment.
Any, any public comment regarding this?
That sounds good. I did notice, and I think I said it earlier, that uh since I'm on the Holiday House Board, I've made a habit of driving through Holiday House when I'm heading into Sellersville. And Washington Avenue south of Holiday House Road is actually the full width with curbs going all the way out. So at some point, we might consider amending this so that it applies between, for the section between Winterd Avenue and up to Holiday House Road because that section of road is just as wide as the rest of Washington Avenue in Sellersville, where they have parking on the west side. Uh, parking on the east side might become useful in the future for events at Holiday House. We don't have to do that now, but I did just want to put that into the notes that south of Holiday House, the prop, the road is widened and it's the same side as what Sellersville has where Sellersville, where Sellersville allows parking on the west side of Washington Avenue.
I think Greg would probably tell you that um, they're not going to be able to enforce until they put signs up. So maybe they just won't put signs on that section for now.
Plus, if there was a special extension uh at the Holiday House regardless, and there wasn't enough parking for food trucks or cars on the grass or in the parking lot, you just make an exception for the hours that you want to have parking there. And this is, this ordinance only pertains to when school is in session.
Yep. Oh, good.
Okay, all right. We need a motion on that, Mary?
So moved.
You need to ask for public comment and somebody has their hand up.
I'm sorry, you're right. John Swerdruck. Go ahead, John.
Thank you. John Swerdruck, Ridge Valley Road. Um, the copy of the ordinance that I read said months when the school was in session, so my comments are are based on that. Uh, but I would like to ask the supervisors to think of the Washington Avenue parking situation a little bit differently. Perhaps consider a different solution. Washington Avenue isn't wide enough to support two lanes of traffic and parking. The problem is that when there is parking on Washington Avenue, traffic needs to weave around the parked vehicles, causing a traffic hazard.
Right.
This hazard, this hazard is worse when there is parking on the northbound side of the road since the cutout in front of the school is only on the southbound side, but still not wide enough for safe parking. The problem is independent of the school and any activities at the school. The congestion caused by the parking may be more of a problem when there is activity at the school. But when the school activity goes away, the problem is still there. The current proposed resolution would make the hazard parking, the hazard caused by the parking a violation on a Sunday afternoon in October, but permissible on a Tuesday night in July. This is only a partial solution. To permanently correct the problem requires a complete ban of street parking on Washington Avenue. So it asks the supervisors to consider changing the ordinance to be no parking anytime on Washington Avenue until the point in time on Washington Avenue is appropriately widened. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment, John. Uh, my opinion is, is uh, I would, I will not support that. Um, there are too many people that live on Washington Avenue that park every now and then. I do think that we are going to the extent of uh fixing the problem during school hours, which is what this was intended and what the complaints were about. That is only my opinion, of course.
Yep, and I agree with Jay and uh after the revisions to that version, did say that, you know, when school is in session. And apparently we have had conversations from West Rock Hill Elementary saying to the neighbors, you can just use our parking lot when we're not using it, which gets the cars off of Washington Avenue and gives them a place to park outside of the roadway, right-of-way paved cartway. So it seems to be at this point a win-win for everybody that, okay, you've got a place to park, which is outside of the street. And just, you know, use it while you're not, you know, you've got a parking lot sitting there, which isn't being used. Somebody else might as well use it. It seems like that's a good, a good solution, but that was not reflected in the version of the uh ordinance that I think John got and looked over. We have had some improvements since then.
Thank you. Mr. Collingwood, you have any comment on it regarding this matter?
No, I agree with you. Um, I think it's good the way it is.
All right, thank you. All right, then I guess uh any other comments while this hearing is open or any questions? I don't see any hands up.
I don't see any either.
Okay, so I'll make a, entertain a motion for uh approval of this resolution.
It's in, it's in ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's okay. I was, I was struggling to find an ordinance number. So it's ordinance two forty-four.
Okay, so ordinance two forty-four.
I'll move for ordinance two forty-four as noted.
Okay, thank you.
David Collingwood.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The um, the other item on the solicitors report is I'm, I'm reporting, you already know, but I'm reporting to the residents that the DC District Court of Appeals has ruled on the FERC application and has ruled against us and upheld FERC in issuing the permit for the um compressor station. Uh, that's a, an appellate federal court. The only appeal left would be to the United States Supreme Court, and the United States Supreme Court doesn't accept appeals as of right. You have to petition and they grant a very, very small fraction when they believe that it's an issue of overwhelming importance. It would cost a lot of money to file a petition for allowance of appeal to the Supreme Court, and it would almost certainly be denied. So my recommendation to you is that this is the end of the road.
Okay, which uh we, we suspected from the beginning I reported, and I think everybody here that is paying attention to this meeting knows that Adelphia never stopped working, never got any permits, never cared about what we were doing as a township for the residents, trying to stop and spending hundreds of thousands of dollars in a loss. Um, my opinion is, is I think it is the end of the road and I think that we should not spend any more money on this project because we're not going to do anything uh to stop it. Mr. Shermer or Mr. Collingwood, do you have any comment regarding this matter?
Uh, yes, this is kind of like you're a hundred feet off the ground and now you try to pull the parachute. It's not going to do anything.
Uh, I know we have people that want to make a public comment, uh, but before they do, I, I agree with both um the other supervisors that um, I, I, we are at the end of the road here. We, we've, the township has done, spent a lot of money, a lot of money, a lot of time and a lot of effort. And it's, I, I think at this point, we have to face reality.
Okay, thank you. I do see a hand raised here on my screen, Cliff. Uh, Mr. Cliff Cole, is that you?
Yes, it is. Uh, here, I'll let you move. Um, I, I really appreciate, uh, I, I'm speaking, I'm Cliff Cole, I'm on twenty-four forty Shoe Craft Road. And I'm speaking for the Citizens for Clean Air. And I want the residents to know that this battle is not over. We respectfully understand the township's decision not to pursue an appeal to the Supreme Court. Um, however, we do um have an active um appeal against the DEP's clean air permit. We have a date. Um, we are, we, in September, we will be, have a hearing with the DC um Circuit of Appeals. We are fighting the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the clean air permit. This is not a done deal. Uh, yes, Adelphia can start this compressor up. Uh, we are very concerned that there will be an accident. These people do not know what they're doing. Okay, I can't back that up, but they've never ever made a compressor in their, you know, this is the first compressor this com- company has made. We're taking pipes that were designed to move oil in the direction from uh up from Philadelphia up to here, up to this destination, and we've changed the direction of it to move gas to Marcus Hook. This, and I appreciate what Jay said. This is real, they've violated all of our uh local ordinances that FERC has allowed them to do that. But citizens of Wa- West Rock Hill, please unite behind us. We have not given up and um, you know, they are not using the best technology available. They could use electric compressors instead of um their gigantic inefficient gas-powered ones. Um, so anyways, this is not a done deal from our pers- perspective. Yes, we're disappointed with the township's decision not to pursue legal action anymore, but I certainly do understand that and I, I can't argue with it. It is a lot of money. Uh, I'm putting my money where my mouth is, but uh where I'm coming from is that the next generation
Minutes are up.
Can I, uh, Mr. Uh, okay, thank you. I just think for our children and our grandchildren, we are continuing this, this fight. So uh, we're Citizens for Clean Air. We do have a website and we do have a GoFundMe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Okay. Uh, I don't see any other hands raised on this matter. Uh, Mary, do we need to make a motion to uh?
May, may I, um, this is Christine Shelley on Waylon Road. Can I give you some comment?
See how, yes, Christine, okay.
I'm sorry, my hand is not raised. I'm on the call and my phone. I'm also, I'm also on vacation right now. So I've been hanging out for this whole meeting and I just wanted to um thank the township. Um, I'm very proud to live in the area where I live. I think that our local government is a very amazing body of showing what we, the people can, can do and what we can be. And I'm really proud to live here and I thank all of you for your hard work. I respect your decision. I thank you for fighting this fight. And that's really all I have to say. Yeah, Cliff said it, you know, we're still fighting. But um, I thank West Rock Hill Township for standing up and and trying, you know, you fought the good fight. And um, even though it looks like a loss, I think it's a win. And I think people are going to look at this in the future and say, wow, West Rock Hill Township stood up and they tried to do what was right. So thank you very much from, there's a lot of citizens that live up across the street from this thing and we thank you for, for fighting. We appreciate it. That's all I have to say. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Okay, moving forward. Okay, moving forward.
You asked be, before that, you asked if there was a motion?
Yeah.
And no, that it would only take a motion to change the status quo. So that's all I have for the solicitors' report this evening.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the solicitor's report as presented.
So moved, David Collingwood.
Second, Hal Shermer.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first item is notification that on June fourth, two thousand twenty-three, the Historical Society will be having an event in James Park. Since it's over one hundred people, it's, I have to notify the Board of Supervisors. They will be required to add an extra porta potty for their event.
Okay, great. July third, you said, or June third?
June fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
June fourth, thank you.
Fourth, yep. The next item is, uh, the township received an invoice from the Borough of Sellersville for, uh, the Holiday House pool in the amount of six hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. Since we already made our donation, uh, earlier in the year, I put it on the agenda for the board to discuss.
Okay. Well, as, uh, as we all know, we did give our contribution, which was, um, quite a bit of money. And, uh, that money was used. And now we have a bill where they're out of money. We have an obligation. We have to pay this. Is that correct in stating that?
Uh, not really. That's, uh, if I can step in and slide into, uh, Chairman Dietz's shoes, uh, we're working on it to try to clarify why this went out, why it came to West Rock Hill instead of going through the authority. And that's part of trying to clarify the lines of communication and what, how things get done. So it's in the process of getting straightened out and might not have to be dealt with.
Okay, that sounds good.
Table the discussion until we know.
Yes, we will table the discussion. We will not take any action until we, until we know. And, and because we did ask this previous, previous times, uh, previous meetings. The Joint Rec Authority is, is a standalone governing body.
Yes.
And they, and they need to approve whatever, whatever bills are being sent out, paid or whatever. The, uh, whoever's, who's, whoever's making these, whoever sent this bill to us, whether it's Sellersville Borough or whatever, needs to go through you folks, the, the Joint Rec Authority.
Yep, and we are uh, aggressively clarifying that.
Can I ask a question, pal, regarding this matter? Did the Joint Rec Authority vote on this at all? Would this, was this bill presented to them?
Uh, no, this went through it. This went through the usual administrative process, which is why we are aggressively adjusting the administrative process.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I have one more item. Uh, at the beginning of the meeting, uh, Supervisor Collingwood brought up about Tyler's Port. That was submitted by Tyler's Port. We just did not get it into the packet. I emailed it to the Board of Supervisors. So Tyler's Port got it in, it just didn't make it into the packet. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving. Is that all you have then, Mr. Lippincott?
That's all, that's all I have.
Bye. Okay. Any questions? No? All right.
Nope.
I'll entertain a motion for approval of the manager's report.
So moved.
Second, David Collingwood.
Thank you, Mr. Collingwood. Uh, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving forward, old business.
I have three items.
Yep.
Number one. A round of applause. Caddie Hill Road is going to be milled and paved starting Monday, the twenty-second.
Yes.
For anyone that's still, um, attending the meeting. Second thing is, um, what's the status of the salt shed, Mr. Lippincott? And also, could you give a, a paving, uh, update for the township?
Sure, the salt shed is complete. Uh, it is done. The, uh, Public Works is working on a ramp just to make sure that it, everything. We can now accept tractor trailer loads. Before, we can only, uh, accept triaxles. Now we can accept, uh, tractor trailer loads. So that will be a big benefit, uh, obtaining salt. So it is complete. Uh, tomorrow, there will be a pre-construction meeting with the paving. Uh, most likely it will start after Labor Day. The roads that are being, uh, paved is Forest, Washington and Bardley? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Those are the three roads that will be being paved.
Okay.
Thank you. No other, old business.
Okay.
Uh, one, and while I do, I have one quick update only because I was, uh, keeping track of the Penn Ridge School District. So some may recall a couple of months ago that uh, North Penn Water Authority was looking at a water tower on township property. Apparently they are now looking at moving that over to behind the old Unives Bank building on the backside of West Rock Hill Elementary School. Uh, they had a presentation on it, I think, Monday last week or this week. So actually Monday last week. So, uh, it looks like they're still looking for locations which would allow them to move forward. Doesn't really affect the township too much, but it is good because hopefully that will help with fire service, water pressure, so that if there is a problem, the top of the new Grand View Hospital is not subject to running out of water and the rest of the residents in the area get better fire and water pressure. And so do all the fire departments.
Thank you. Okay, is that all? All right, moving forward, then new business. Any new business?
I have none.
Okay.
I have none.
All right. Moving forward from, in that public comment, if you have public comment, please state your name and address and you will have, uh, two and a half minutes, right, Greg?
Correct, two and a half minutes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Cole, you're, you're up again.
Okay, thank you. I won't talk about the compressor anymore. I've already said enough about that. Um, I'd like to talk about the Wawa proposal. And, um, I, there's one thing I don't really understand is that how Wawa even got on the agenda for the meeting tonight. Uh, I didn't, they don't seem to have had a confirmed appointment. And, uh, you know, I mean, I know they, they went through and there was a brief thing with the, uh, Planning Commission, but I don't quite understand why they got preference for the meeting tonight. But, uh, moving on from that, I'd like to say that we don't want that traffic light. Uh, they seem to be in cahoots with the people with the warehouse. And, um, the local residents, I'm sure, do not want that. We certainly don't want twenty-four hour, um, you know, uh, access. So I implore the uh, supervisors not to, uh, to, to budge on that. Um, it's like Tony, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not biased here. I'm a Wawa fan, you know? Um, I, I do use Wawa myself, so maybe I am somewhat hypocritical, but gosh, there's two in Sauter Town. There's one in Quaker Town. There's one on Unionville Pike. It's not like we're, uh, we have like a, a dearth of, of, uh, of Wawa's around here. I don't think, you know, and it just seems to me like this will be used by the P, the truck drivers there for the proposed warehouse facility. Uh, let's just say no to this. They require zoning, uh, variances. Let's not give them to them. Um, you know, Julie kept on talking about the fairness to the applicant. Well, what about the fairness to the local residents? And let's remember the history of why this is zoned industrial. And I think that's something that the supervisors need to address is changing the zoning on this area back to something that's residential and industrial, because the industrial we have in there is perfectly willing to work with the residents. We're bringing in new people that want to just, you know, screw the residents. They don't care about them. And, you know, I'm sorry, the, the buffering that they talked about putting in is just, you know, ridiculously limited, but, um, those are my views. I think I've stated my piece. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, let's see here. Uh, Anthony, Tony, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have a question here. Um, I know it, the, uh, public comment is not for questioning, but, um, when will the board consider going back, uh, to in-person meetings? The, there, in this part of the township, there's a lot of, oh, there's a lot that's going on. I, I think you know that, David knows that. Um, and I think that there's a lot of people that, uh, don't have an email address. Um, and, you know, I've had a conversation with Greg about that, that you know, they can submit and, uh, they can call in, but it all stems from an email address. And there's not a lot of people that are internet savvy that can do that. And, um, I, I personally, I think it's wrong. And, um, I think that uh, we need to move forwards. There's a lot of other townships, um, you know, East Rock Hill, um, uh, uh, Percasie have in-person meetings and, um, uh, I, I'm, my personal opinion is, is that I, I think it's wrong and I think there's a lot of important, uh, things that are going into township that there's a lot of people that need to be part of these meetings. And I think that we are, um, not including them and that's my personal opinion. So I thank you.
All right, thanks for your comment. Moving forward, any other comments?
Well, I would, I would respond to Tony that we are investigating that and trying to find a way of accommodating both the people who want to come in person and those who are comfortable coming in online. And I believe that the online attendance, just twenty-eight people or thirty-something people today is normally higher than what you would find at most, at most normal meetings because it's much easier to sit here and dial in. You can be in your pajamas and fuzzy bunny slippers and be, uh, you know, sipping on cocoa while you're listening to what's going on. But, uh, we are looking into that. So.
I, I could tell you which, uh, triple net, um, and tell for Lutheran. There's a lot of people over there that aren't in connection and don't have internet connection. And I, uh, there's a lot of people that have, would have a lot of say in that. And, you know, it's I, I think it's wrong. I, I think it, I don't know why we're doing this. Um, it's my personal opinion. We're like the only township that is behind on, um, you know, still doing Zoom, um, and I, I think we need to move forwards. I don't know what the problem is. Really, I don't.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for, uh, adjournment into executive.
I'll make that motion, David Collingwood.
And I will second, Hal Shermer.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for your input. Have a great night.
Good night, everybody.
Yep, thanks, everyone.